Home problems.
Called to order to regular meeting at the Board of County Commissioners on Monday, October 12, 2020, at 6 o'clock. As always, we'll start off the invocation. I'll ask Commissioner Walker if he'd please lead us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Father, you've given us so many blessings that sometimes we overlook just how blessed we are. But we thank you and ask that you continue to bless us individually, as a county, and as a country. We have a lot of needs. These are unusual times. We need your help more nowadays than we do a lot of other times. Just ask that you be with us, let us feel your love and presence in special ways. We continue to go through some challenging times. Father, we ask that you be with us here this evening, guide us, direct us, help us to do things the way you'd have us to do them to best serve our neighbors. We ask for that you be with those who have a special need, whatever it might be. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
And let's continue standing for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioners, before we do the approval of the agenda, I need to please ask for the agenda to be amended to include two items to discussion agenda. The first item is the grant funding request from the Grant Review Committee that met Friday as item G, and request to allocate funds to energy/ran assistance programs through DSS, which will be item H.
Moved to approve with changes?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I even have a question. I didn't quite follow completely the DSS request.
I can tell you.
Yeah, go ahead, Shannon.
It's, I talked with the DSS director today, and she asked me, they're having a huge increase in requests for the rent assistance program and for the energy assistance program, and they only have a certain amount of money for those funded. A lot of people are requesting because of COVID-related issues, and we can use some of this COVID funding to help put more money into that fund for them to help more people with that. That's what that's for.
Very good. Thank you.
Agenda has been approved. I'll go ahead and move on to our comments from Commissioner and Manager. Start with Commissioner Morse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting tonight, both here and online. Hopefully, we have a few folks there as well. Just want to tell everybody I'm still not doing office hours. I'll probably just hold off on that the rest of the year and see how the virus thing goes and maybe start that back up next year. And I had a third thing, but I forgot what it was, so it must not have been too important. I'll go back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, sir. Rick, if you think of what your third thing was, you can just use part of my time.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I want to also add my welcome to Commissioner Morris. It's always good to look out and see people here, shows an interest in our county government and our community, and I hope you'll find your time well spent by being here this evening. I'll just say one more thing. I know you don't like long meetings, Commissioner Lightford. I'll stop with one more thing. It sure is nice to see some sunshine. I'm starting to get mild, do you believe? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll stop there.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lightford?
Okay, I'd just like to say that I'm very thankful to be here tonight. I know we all got a lot to be thankful for in this trying time, and I just pray that the Lord will be with us. He will lead, guide, and direct us in all the things we do, because he is the master of this universe, and I just want to thank him from my standpoint, and everybody else is here. Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Lightford. Commissioner Menonheim?
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for being here this afternoon. I tell you, it's good to see the seats almost full on this side, and everyone is here. Thank you for coming out. Always a blessing to see the citizens come out to Stokes County and participate in the governmental process. Do want to remind everyone that early voting starts Thursday, and if you are a candidate running for an office, I would ask that, Jason Perry sent out the new guidelines and rules this week concerning the voting process for this year. And if you are a candidate and you don't have those guidelines, just call Jason. He'd be glad to forward it to you. And it has all, it's about nine pages long, and it shows some changes that have been made from the spring. And so if you are a candidate and you're looking in live stream or you hear in person, I'd probably give them a call and ask for a copy of that. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll take it with the other Commissioners as well. It's good to see everybody here. A little concerned about the back row, but I think they'll be all right. We've got the sheriff back there with them, so. It's good to see Ms. Sonia Cox here. She's running for Commissioner, and seeing how we're doing business. Also, Mr. Wayne Barney Castle also running for Commissioner. Thank y'all for being here tonight. With it, I'll move it on to our County Manager.
Chairman, thank you very much, and I do welcome everyone here and hope everybody's doing well. I would like to mention one thing that has come to my and Shannon's attention today, and that's concerning the Volunteer Fire District of South Stokes Fire Department on their substation they have on number eight. They have applied for reducing homeowners' fire insurance and ratings, and they have received a lower rating on a five-mile district area in the South Stokes Substation area, and that is a whole lot of walnut cones, fire district area also. So Brian Boo and Thomas May was the main ones that was in that, and he's just letting us know now. I don't know how much money Shannon may be saving on hers, because she's fallen in that district, but it's always a good thing when things kind of better, the public, in a lot of ways. Good deal for our firemen and doing a job that is providing the service to our citizens and reducing the amount of payment we make. See these guys, just let them know.
Absolutely. Always thanking firefighters for doing what they're doing.
IT was having an issue today with live streaming. They said if anybody lets you know that live streaming's not working, they have done everything they can to get it up, and it's not their issue at this point. It's recording, so worst-case scenario, if it doesn't livestream, we'll put the video up as soon as they're able to do it in the morning. Hopefully, it'll start, but they were having issues with it earlier today.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, we'll move on now to our public comments. As always, I'll give you three minutes. When the time's about up, I'll hold my hand up and we'll ask, could you please wrap it up? And when you come up here, please state your name, your address, and what the topic's about. We'll start with Mr. Savarsky.
My name is Shree Nandasaava Shree. In the next three minutes, I'll talk about solutions to health care and give a quick demonstration. There are two kinds of diseases, infectious and degenerative. In an earlier presentation, I described how degenerative diseases, including the pandemic of birth defects, 3% of all births, have been presented and healed naturally. The leading cause of childhood death today is cancer. These statistics are outrageous. Something dreadful, something is dreadfully wrong. I described how our toxic, revitalized food and agricultural system is responsible. The solution is non-toxic biological agriculture, which I described in detail earlier. Today, I'm focusing on infectious diseases. It turns out that we've had the cure for infectious diseases for over 5,000 years. The answer is pure silver. Ancient Egyptians used it, and it's still in use today. Bacterial and viral pathogens can't survive in the presence of silver. That's why activated carbon filters use silver, why medical bandages and devices use it. colloidal silver prevents infections on burn patients. Over 650 pathogens tested and hundreds of research papers prove that silver is the most powerful natural antiviral antibiotic on earth. Nothing else comes close, and it's totally safe with no human side effects. Science Digest called it "our mightiest germ fighter." Colloidal silver is the most effective at a particle size of about 15 nanometers and a concentration of 10 to 20 parts per million. You don't need much. I have a $30 device here called a mesh nebulizer. It holds half a tablespoon of colloidal silver. It turns on instantly. Take a look. It makes an aerosol mist that can be breathed into the lungs. According to medical researchers, it destroys SARS and coronaviruses by 90% in one hour and 99.9% in 24 hours. This means that it can wipe out all seasonal flu viruses, all pandemic viruses in one day. It also destroys pneumonia and tuberculosis. Taken orally, researchers say colloidal silver destroys all pathogenic bacteria and viruses within the body. This means that we can eliminate all infectious diseases worldwide for about 10 cents per person. This knowledge needs to be spread throughout the county and the nation. Details are on my website at rebuildhealth.com. I also recommend reading the book Extraordinary Health Care, and you can learn more about this at my website, again, at rebuildhealth.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Savarsky. All right, up next, we have Shree Nickleston. Tim Nickleston?
Yes. Ladies, gentlemen, elected officials, as a citizen and a taxpayer of Stokes County, I, as others, welcome any event that pertains to terrorism and favors the favorable recognition of Stokes County. And of course, I'm sorry, the subject on this would be a matter of understanding, some of the officials were criticized because they enforced something at issue with the Farm Fest organization, and I bring a lot of issue with, and I'll go ahead with what I'm seeing here. Farm Fest event, in my opinion, was a great idea with great potential. Unfortunately, there were some rules and regulations that were ignored. Now, is that category of being naive, or is that arrogance? I'll answer it in further reading here. Our county officials cooperated with the organizers, permitted the event to continue, and with the agreement, on the following Monday, that any permit would be acquired. Well, evidently, that hasn't happened, so I guess it falls in the category of arrogance more so than it would be in being naive. As for the taxpayers and the public, they were put into a position of litigation for this by ignoring. And as a business owner, I've been met with a lot of endless regulations, and I felt scrutinized at times. But our officials have a duty to uphold the laws and regulations set forth, mainly because of our state legislature. The other issue is that really is most troubling for me is for our elected official of Stokes County was complicit, or at least incredibly deeply involved in this event, creating a total conflict of interest for the taxpayers and other citizens of Stokes County. And in my, may I emphasize my opinion, may that led to the other organizers in a position of not being in compliance. Along with other hard-working, taxpaying citizens of Stokes County, we did not need to be subjected to the litigation due to the negligence of a few noncompliant individuals. Shree and I pay almost a quarter of a million dollars a year to Stokes County. That is in property, equipment, sales, and use taxes. We make it a point, we use Stokes County as a hub. All our other locations, we bring it into Stokes County, and the reason we do is because the 2% sales tax.
Your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it for our public comments. And I'll ask for approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll now move on to the information agenda. Item A, register deeds. Mr. Brandon Hooker.
Good evening. I'm here today to give a report on the first quarter of our fiscal year 2020, 2021, and I've got nothing but good news in this report. It's the best start we've had to a fiscal year in 15 years. Let me look at the report here, if you've got it in front of you. Total revenue for the quarter was 146, 357, and you can see how many deeds we recorded there, 493, 464 in deeds of trust, miscellaneous documents there, 902. That includes right-of-way agreements, power of attorneys, things like that. 68 plants, two birth certificates, 118 death certificates. We issued an 83 marriage license, administered the oath of office to 33 notaries, notarized seven signatures, issued 750 copies, certified copies, and 128 uncertified. The number of transactions this past quarter compared to the first quarter of last fiscal year was a 2.77% increase, and revenue was an 18.8% increase. You can see the total money collected from the state at $50,705.90 for net revenue the last three months of $95,651.10. Our success in the, or our revenue depends heavily, heavily upon the housing market, and the housing market has remained resilient through the coronavirus pandemic, and it's pushed interest rates down to historic lows, and these lower interest rates have led to a lot of homeowners to refinance. In fact, we have recorded 107 more deeds of trust this quarter than we did the same quarter last year. And just on that document type alone, that led to a $6,848 increase in revenue. Falling interest rates have led to high demand. It's a good time to get a loan. Couple that with a nationwide housing shortage, and home prices have gone up, and most of our income, as you've seen on that report, comes from excise tax now. That excise tax is paid on the home and property sales, and they're going up, so we're getting more revenue off of that. And the excise tax paid on home sales from July 1 of 2019 to September 3 of 2019 increased by more than $15,000 for this same reporting period this year. So things are looking very good, but you know the housing market, the economy, it's a cycle, so I can't tell you these numbers are going to hold steady for the next four, five, six, seven years. All I know is that's how it's going. Right now, it's going very well. We also saw a 48% increase in marriage license from the same period last year. I don't have a good explanation for that, other than people want to get married in a year with a zero, so they can figure out how long they've been married. We have seen an increase in out-of-county marriages. People are coming here. We're becoming more of a destination-type venue for weddings. We've got a lot of venues that have opened up here, and after some restrict, we moved in phases, you know, they're getting more back in business than they were a few months The COVID pandemic in our office, it affected a little bit as far as operation. The Governor issued some executive orders that affected us, and I think I failed to mention those in my last reports. I'm going to talk about them for just a couple of minutes here. One executive order increased the valid dates for a marriage license from 60 days to 120 days. Because of those venues shutting down, people had to change plans, so the Governor extended the valid dates of their marriage license to help them out. Also extended the periods. Notaries have to appear before the register deeds to take their oath of office, from 45 days to 90 days. He authorized emergency video notarizations, and we've seen a few documents come in that were notarized that way. And we also were given capabilities, if the county had it, to issue or permission, if the county had the capability, to issue marriage license through audiovisual means instead of in-person. The executive orders that pertain to marriage license expired in August, but the notary oath extension and the video notarization orders remain in effect until March the 1st. I informed the public about this on our website and through social media means, and we had a few people utilize those orders, but most haven't. Mostly, we've been operating normally, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions or comments? Mr. Hooker here? Commissioner Menonheim?
Just a comment. Brandon, I really appreciate the way you subdivide each area from deeds to marriage license. You give us the exact number. You give us the exact numerical amount of money that we're making off of different items, and I have seen the register deeds office, in my opinion, step up with new technology that is being utilized by you and your staff, and I have seen nothing but an increase going up each time you report. And I just want to say to you and your staff at the register deeds office, thank you for the job y'all are doing right now. Thank you for the technology, as y'all are keeping up to date with everything that new is coming out, so thank you.
We appreciate that. We're just trying to make everything as accessible as possible.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Thanks for the report.
Yes, sir.
Jimmy?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. You're good. Thank you, Brandon. We'll now move on to a discussion agenda on item A, the Tax Administration Monthly Report. Mr. Richard Brin.
Good evening. I've got a short report session, take but a couple of minutes. As always, the first item is the Tax Collection Status Report. Happy to report we've collected $12,926,000, or 54.15% of the budgeted amount. That's a $450,000 increase from this same point last year. Next item, I have the Quarterly Discovery and Garnish Report. We've discovered 119 accounts for $2,263,000 that generated $23,171 in revenue. We've processed 265 garnishments with a levy of $189,107. The next item is our Quarterly EMS Billing and Collections Report. We've billed 1,052 transports, charged $658,965, and collected $379,727 of that amount. Next item is our Interstate Collections Report, the NC Debt Setoff. We've collected $15,739 for this fiscal year. And moving on, we have real and personal releases, less than 100, six accounts that totaled $51.26. And then we have real and personal refunds, more than 100. We have seven accounts that totaled $1,366.37. And then the final item is a late application for elderly exemption. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Brin? Thank you, Richard.
I'd like to move the two items to the consent agenda for the 26th, the real and personal refunds, more than 100, and the late application for elderly exemption.
All right. Thank you, sir. Move on to item B, the Foothills Farm Festival Discussion. Commissioner Rick Morse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some prepared comments I'd like to make to initiate our discussion on this topic, so I'll go through those first. During the past few years, agritourism has been a major thrust by both the state and local governments in North Carolina to boost tourism and provide an additional source of revenue for farmers. Farmers have been hit especially hard during the COVID-19 virus due to low commodity prices, high labor costs, and labor shortages. Stokes County has strongly supported agritourism to assist our local citizen farmers. To make agritourism feasible for farmers, new regulations have been developed where many requirements that normally apply to commercial business activities have been relaxed when using bona fide farmland, farm buildings, and other farm facilities to stage agritourism events. I was at such an agritourism event this past Saturday in Stokes County and observed a situation that I think requires the attention of the Board of County Commissioners. I was quite surprised to see an arrival of a group of county building and environmental health inspectors to the festival just as the event organizers were attempting to get the event started. I was there early because I was working with the ruritans to sell food at the event. For the record, I had no other involvement in the planning or preparation for the event apart from putting out a couple of directional road signs in King and displaying my antique tractor at the event. This event was widely advertised by road banners, on local radio, on social media outlets, and it was mentioned by one of our Commissioners two weeks ago at our last regular meeting. During the festival and afterward, I've been approached by several county citizens questioning me about the timing of the inspections and the disruption it caused at the beginning of the event. I told them I would investigate and get them an answer. As far as the actual inspections went, the inspectors conducted themselves in a very professional manner. They found some items that they were at, they found some items that they asked the event organizers to address. I received no complaints from the public about the inspectors or how they conducted their inspections. The complaints were just about the timing of the inspection and the disruption it caused, which was my concern as well. From a Commissioner perspective, I have a larger concern, which is policy. More specifically, do our local policies properly support agritourism? It is important that our policies facilitate agritourism events by preventing confusion and ensuring farmers feel that they are supported by local government in staging these events. Things like last-minute inspections that could totally disrupt an event could have a chilling effect on other farmers considering such events. Our job as Commissioners is to provide sound policy that makes it as easy as possible for farmers to hold successful agritourism events in Stokes County. Below are some questions I would like answered for the Board. The purpose of the questions is to answer the public inquiries that I received on the timing of the inspections at the Foothills Festival and to gain information needed for a review of the county's policies related to agritourism. My questions are not designed to criticize or put anyone on the spot. They are just to provide transparency to the public and to prevent future situations like the one at the festival that could damage the county's agritourism component of economic development. My questions are, and there's seven of them. Number one is who specifically was involved in the decision process to send county building and environmental health inspectors to the Foothills Farm Festival? Number two, was there any suspicion by the decision-maker or decision-makers about the last-minute nature of the complaint just before close of business and only a few hours before the start of the event? Number three, was the person or persons who filed the complaint asked by anyone exactly when they became aware of the situation for which they were filing a last-minute complaint? Was the county attorney involved in this? So what was the legal issue, and who spoke to him? Number five, exactly what time was the decision made to send the inspectors out on Saturday morning? Number six, when the decision was made to send inspectors on Saturday morning, was any consideration given to making a courtesy call to the event organizers to notify them of the, excuse me. Let me start that one over. When the decision was made to send inspectors on Saturday morning, was any consideration given to making a courtesy call to the event organizers to notify them of the impending visit and to inform them of the nature of the complaint? If not, why not? Since the county's policy is to support and facilitate agritourism events, not intentionally disrupt them. And then number seven was any consideration given to notifying the entire Board of Commissioners that decision had been made to send inspectors out during the weekend to conduct an unannounced inspection at this rather large-scale event? In summary, if policy changes are needed to address, facilitate, and encourage agritourism, then I feel they should be made as soon as possible. Most of my concerns and those expressed to me by others are addressed in the seven questions I have posed, though the responses may lead to additional questions from me or other Board members. I would like to get written answers to the questions by probably next Monday if possible, so the Board can decide if additional information is needed for our follow-on policy discussion. I am especially interested in the responses to questions number three, number six, and number seven. I think it's important that we can show the public that our policies do not allow individuals or groups to weaponize county departments against other citizens or event organizers. Stokes County is serious about promoting agritourism, and its policies need to walk the talk and clearly demonstrate. clearly demonstrate support for the farmers who want to assume the risk and make the financial investment to stage these type of events. And I personally believe that there are policy things that need to be addressed. I'll just give you one example. I don't think our blanket policy on campers and where you can use them and when you can use them is adequate to address an agritourism event like the one that we had last weekend. And I think there's going to be several other areas where our policy probably does not adequately support what we're trying to accomplish with agritourism events. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Morris, I can start by answering a couple of these questions for you. There was a... And we actually had a gentleman in the crowd tonight if you would like to ask him.
I'll write the answer tonight. I'll be happy to get them next week.
Yeah, listen to it, man.
Well, now's fine.
Okay. It's... Mr. Lawson, would you like to come forward? Because this is where the call will come from, the complaint. Mr. Lawson, can you please tell us what happened Friday?
Friday about noon time, I went up to hook the roof controller up, and I found out... I went around, I was going to plug up a cord so everything would be ready. When I got there, there was no GFIs, no way, no how. So I went around and looked at the panel to make sure there was no GFI breaker inside the panel. Well, I get to looking around, there's all kinds of stuff that's been done. I said, "Wait a minute, there is no GFIs." So I called David... No, I called Rick.
My.
Look, look. Rick couldn't...
Warden.
No, it wasn't Big Rick, it was Little Rick.
Warden.
Okay. Anyhow, I talked to him. He said, "Well, he'd have to give a David Soderfink about it." That was a little after 3:00. And he had time to do an inspection. But anyhow, he said he'd call me back in a little bit, give me an answer what they was going to do about it. I said, "There's a better permit bought." I said, "If it has, can I change the two GFIs out that we're going to use? Can I go ahead and put two GFIs on it?" I'm an electrical contractor.
What was the need for the GFIs? What was the purpose of them?
A GFI is protecting... It's a safety issue. You know, you've got cords laying here on the ground, and you don't have no way of protecting the people. The cords that's going to be used up there weren't even waterproof. I mean, a cord will pick up moisture.
What makes you a professional on this? Makes you a professional on this?
I'm an electrical contractor, been an electrical contractor since 1976. I think it's getting close to 40 years, if I remember correctly. But anyhow, I called David. David never did return my call. It was a little after 4:00. I go back and call David again. David's first thing that came out of his mouth, "Well, I've been here 37 years. I'm just riding the boat." I thought that was a dumb answer. He said, "Well, does your nephew know anything about this, which he's talking about you?" I said, "I don't know if he does or not, but if he don't, he'll probably find out about it." Well, it went from that, and I said, "David, I said, it's on you. I said, it's on you and the county." I said, "Because the realtors will not hook a cord up to those clothes." I said, "It's dangerous." And I explained to him what was going on. I said, "They've done underground wiring up here. They've done all this other stuff." And I said, "It's a safety issue." And I said, "You've got... They're expecting 3,000 people or more up here." And I said, "That's putting that many people in danger." I've seen where a ground came off of a dryer. I've seen a little three-year-old girl's eyes buzzed out of her head. It was strictly a... It wasn't no politician, and nobody else had anything to do with this. But David made it as a politic, and that was wrong.
Let me give you some background on the NUC for people that do not understand this. The National Electrical Codebook was... The purpose and the definition of it is to safeguard people and property from the hazards of electrical installations. That is the purpose. Every year, that book is revised. Things that are in that book are the result of that very thing. I asked an inspector 20 years ago, "Why do you have to go back every four years and change that?" And his exact words to me was, "It's because of injury, death, and lawsuits. You can't say it any clearer than that." Larry was not trying to cause a problem.
He didn't talk about it.
It's a safety issue, and that's all it was. There was nothing political in any of this.
David made it into a political. I'm sure he called some of the people and got certain things. And his exact words was, "I'll send the sheriff out there, the insurance department out there, let them investigate." I said, "What does the sheriff know about inspecting the electrical?" He said, "Well, my hands are tied, everybody's getting ready to go home." He had time then to send someone out there and check it. He didn't have to wait until Saturday morning. And he wasn't looking after the county no way, no how. He was looking after certain warrants. That's the only thing, he was covering their ass, put it quite bluntly. So... But Andy found out about it at 502, or 501, I think it was.
501 when I called in.
I called Judy, and I said, "Judy, I said, somebody needs to know about this." I said, "Because they're leaving the county wide open for a lawsuit." And I seen two little girls walking around. I cooked 400 hot dogs up there. So it wasn't... I mean, we was up there to make some money for the realtors. And I seen two little girls running around up there, barefooted. And what would have happened if those little girls, if there'd been a shore underneath that ground, if those little girls, they'd probably been killed. And then it left the whole county open for a lawsuit. I don't know how y'all feel about it, but maybe Matt.
Commissioner Morris, that's where the phone call began. I was contacted around 501, 502, like I said. At the time, they had told me what they had discussed with the inspections Department. I actually responded to them that this was not a county event, not to worry about it, that this falls back onto the event holders. After that, I was at my buddy's wedding rehearsal and got to thinking about it. So after it was over with, I contacted our county manager, told our county manager what the complaint I had received from Mr. Lawson and asked the question, "Can our county be held responsible?" The answer was from Mr. Oakley that he did not know we had to contact our county attorney. I then contacted our county attorney, Mr. Breiter, right around 8:00 in that range, told him the situation, what I was told, got his legal advice on that. And Mr. Breiter, what was your answer to me?
I told you that if a county official is notified of a potential electrical event that's going to take place and does nothing about it, there is potential liability there.
At that time?
And I also made the statement that this needs to be checked out before...
Anybody who showed up.
Because it's a safety issue. And any time that we're aware of safety issues at a event that's going to try to learn a number of people, we have a legal and moral obligation to make sure the government is protected. So I made the decision that it had to be... The electrical issue had to be checked out to make sure it's safe.
And after I had that discussion with Mr. Breiter, I then contacted our county attorney back. At that point, it was out of my hands. I put it into the county attorney's hands... I mean, I'm sorry, our county manager's hands, and I will let him speak from here.
Yeah. What I'd done, after I was notified of the potential danger or potential electrical problems, and after I heard that from my attorney that we could be held liable, but more importantly, the safety issues had to be checked into, that was what was on my mind. So I made a decision to give David Soderfink a call and say, "Hey, it sounds to me like we need to get up there and make sure that this electrical problem is taken care of." But at the same time, I was going to call the fire marshal because that is where these permitings... Permits start at. They allow mass gathering festivals or whatever event may be having to make sure that they have a checklist online that you go on and you fill this checklist out. And if anything that you're doing falls below the checklist, then yes, you need to get a permit on what you're doing. I just felt like with the advice from my attorney and what was going on, and this was like 8:00, I remember I called David, 8:00, and I told him that David Soderfink and your team needs to get up there and make sure this electrical problem was taken care of. And the last thing I wanted on my mind for someone's child or parent or brother, sister, or whatever, to get hurt on something that could be a problem, you know? It's like what I heard from my attorney. If a bomb threat is given at our school, I guarantee you that sheriff is going, and he gonna go, I don't care what time it is, he gonna check it out. You've got to respond to it. You've got to make sure that the citizens are taken care of. And this is what I'd done. And I don't regret it. All of this could have been solved if the permits were purchased and the people were allowed to come up there and do what is necessary as far as each individual department in reviewing and overseeing the events and what stuff that they was putting in as far as the tent or any kind of electrical or any kind of cooking or whatever. Don't find out it wasn't needing... The tent was way too big. It had to be permitted. And find out that there was... Maybe some catering going on? That may be exempt. But when you cook on sites non, you've got to have your help, environmental help to come in and inspect the food, what you're doing. And then the fire marshal, he does what he needs to do. And then there were several electrical problems, like you said, that the fire... The planning department found.
Well, can I ask a question real quick? I'm sorry to interrupt you. But can we make this public what was found up there?
It is public record.
So it is public record.
It's just not been put out yet because the staff needs to document what they've done and how they've done it and what, so they can make sure that everything is followed and was truthful and everything. But it is my understanding that once they was up there and they done all this, that everything went off, you know, it was very professional in doing what they needed to do.
Well, the fire department, they did an extremely good job because they came in, they brought generators in there. I mean, they made the event happen.
Yep. And I do want to say that, you know, I was notified, you know, you've got a lot of people that are not even involved in this, you know? I didn't contact our clerks. You had no idea this was going on, but my... I think Ronnie, you was gone on vacation. Were you at the beach or something?
Sure. I would like to make it a public record, on public record, because I got rumors sent to me this afternoon that I was involved in this, and I want everyone that's watching... My wife and I left Friday morning to go to Wilmington, and we spent the weekend with our grandchildren. So we were down there Friday, Saturday, didn't get back till late Sunday night. I did not find out anything about this until Tuesday. So whoever has tried to start a rumor that I was involved in this, I want it noted right now that those people trying to start a rumor bringing me into this had better get their facts straight. I was in Wilmington, and I didn't even know anything about this until Tuesday. Did any of y'all call me? Thank you. Thank you very much, Ronnie.
What was you going to be able to do in Wilmington?
Exactly.
Well, the only reason I called it in, I didn't... I mean, it would have been a great event. I mean, I was all for it. But when I drove up and seen that, it was a safety issue for me. And that was the only reason I called it in.
I contacted Terry Cormer. Terry Cormer is a retired electrical inspector, chief inspector for the city high point. I did not go into a great deal of details. The only thing I said to him, he also teaches code classes, he teaches electrical contracting. We've taken those classes, a lot of our employees have been taking them also. And I talked to him. I said, "There's a GFI circuit that's not protected by a GFI." And his exact words to me was, "That's not good." I told him that Larry had contacted the inspections Department, and I said, "Was he out of line in doing this?" And his words to me was, "It would have been unethical for him not to have reported this. There was nothing political about this. There was no scheme here. We saw a problem, and we addressed it. And I will do it, and I'm sure Larry will do it again."
I will do it again. If I see something out here that's coming up where there's more people, when there's going to be an event like that, just like bending them, going to put someone on the bend, that like they did this Fourth of July, I walk up, see something that's not safe, I'll call them out on it. And I'll call the inspection department, don't need anybody. I don't care if it's my own son, I'd do it. Because politics is one thing, but you don't mix politics with safety. Safety should be number one, Rick.
One priority. But like you said, you've got your seven questions here, and if I can get those seven questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those in writing.
Leave me on till you're done.
And that way, we can get together now. If the county and the Board of Commissioners need to get together along with, if you want my help on it, and sit down and establish policies that would govern certain incidents that happen such as this, and here's the protocol that we want on it, and here's how we function, then by all means, you guys need to address that. As far as the event is going on, I'm all for people being able to get out of the house and do something other than this COVID mess. You know, we need to somehow or another get back to some type of normacy that we used to know.
But they expect to be safe when they go on their property.
And that's true. And once I got that call, I had no other choice other than call the inspectors in to go check it. And once they were there, I said, "Do what necessity was necessary to do to make sure it was safe." And I am, and you know, and I even found out that they brought a generator in.
They did.
Well, great. I'm all for it. I'm glad they did.
The county brought a generator in.
The county did.
Yes.
Well, I'm glad they did. They need to make sure that when something like this is going on, that we do what we need to do to make sure the people are enjoying ourselves, and I'm glad they done that.
I think it was a great thing. Don't get me wrong about that. I was all for it, just like I was for the event, Fourth of July. Anything to help this side of the county, I'm for it. So I didn't do it for spite or... I've never met Robin to it about twice in my whole life. Far as I know, he's a good fellow as anybody else out here. But at the same time, it should have been safe. And I've heard all kinds of rumors and stuff, and I understand, we've even heard, I don't know about hiring, but he's had other people going out there inspecting after the inspectors been out there. I don't like Eddie because we... You've got one of the best. I have worked in South Carolina, Georgia, Virginia, all over North Carolina. I'm licensed in all four states, unlimited. And I have never worked with a better inspector than... I call him Big Rick. I don't even know what his last name is, but he's an outstanding inspector. People say anything they want to about him, but he knows his job, he knows what he's doing. And we're lucky to have an inspector like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Morris, I'm also... As far as my part right here, I can tell you right here, I don't think there's a single person sitting on this board, I don't think there's a single person sitting in this room that don't support any kind of festival that goes on in this county, especially anything to do with the farmers. My family comes from a line of farmers. We're big supporters of them. But the thing of it is, when I come in here and put my hand on that Bible standing right there and took my oath, it was for the citizens and the county and what was best for it. So therefore, I took my job on pass. I didn't care if it was past 5:00. I contacted our manager and our attorney, and I let the manager hold it for there. Now unfortunately, we are in a small county. I live in one of the smallest areas of the county. People talk. And unfortunately, it had been good things come back in this part, and I'm not getting too deep into that, but the thing of it is, this is where I grew up at. This is where my family grew up right here. And to come back and hear that some of the stuff that's been said, the lies that have been told on this really aggravates me because there was nothing at all, no jealousy, no nothing, that would have been accused of, that happened here. It was just a fact of safety for the citizens, and the county could have been held responsible. If we don't take that oath serious, then what are we doing sitting up here? If anybody else wants to comment, please go ahead.
I will, but others can go first.
Well, I feel like we've probably discussed this issue to death, so I feel like we need to move on.
You want to go, or want me to?
Yeah, I would just say, I don't disagree with, or never suspected anybody didn't support the farmers on the board. I'm not familiar with all the rumors and whatever you're talking about. I just don't read that stuff. But I agree with Ty's advice, go out there and the decision to go out there. I don't really have any objection. My whole reason to put this on the agenda is so we can address the policy associated with it. Y'all can discuss details of all what happened with the event organizers, as far as I'm concerned. I would like to get written answers to questions, put it on our next agenda so we can start talking about what policy changes might be necessary. You know, maybe there's different types... With, you know, there may, maybe there's different types of agrotourism events that would follow different guidelines. Like I said, the camping thing, we've got this, I think, too restrictive policy on campers. I mean, if somebody, what if somebody drags a tractor in there on a trailer with a camper and they can't s- and then they have to go get a motel and they can't stay in their camper overnight while they're displaying their equipment? I mean, stuff like, I think that's the kind of discussion I'd like to get into. And, and then I, you know, if, in my opinion, when you show up at the beginning of the event and disrupt it, that introduces all kind of additional risk to the people who are putting on the event. They needed to be doing other things. And to me, that's a sign the system, our system, all of us own is not, was not working correctly. And so I, I got a real issue with these last minute call, call-ins. I would like to address that in the policy discussion as we get further into it as well.
And although I do agree with you on that, I do agree, last minute was not the best thing. Unfortunately, it come back down to a safety issue. But then again, if procedure was followed by the event holders, permits were been bought, there would have never been a problem.
Well, the biggest question I got, and I'll just tell you before you start answering them, why didn't somebody call Robert and Cheryl at eight o'clock when everybody else is making these decisions and give them a heads up?
Why didn't they go get the permits?
Al, Al, Al. You don't need to, you stay, you be quiet out there. It's okay.
Uh-uh, leave. Just leave. Just leave. Just leave.
Be brought back in this county.
Leave. I'm sorry.
I just want to know to answer that question. Why, why? Why couldn't we give them the courtesy of giving them a heads up and we could avoid this whole situation?
It couldn't have been, I'm just gonna say this real quick. It don't matter if ever single one of us gave a phone call. Electrical is a serious issue. If there was no permit bought, nothing could have been fixed anyway.
About electrical, so let's just.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and put this aside.
Rules for thee, but not me.
I'd just like to have a policy discussion on this and, and address our policies so that we support the farmers and have lots of good.
I don't think there's one person in this room that don't support a farmer and on top of.
That's all, that's all my motive is for doing this.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and address this right here. With a meeting with our inspections department after looking into it, the one thing I wanted to make sure was, was this a legit complaint? What I got back from our inspector Rick Simone, it was a page and a half of violations. Yes, it was a serious risk factor, huge risk factor. It ain't the part, only about the part about the county getting sued, but what if it had been a, anybody, anybody, but especially a kid that had walked out there and got electrocuted? And that was one thing that got brought to my attention actually Saturday. Well, you didn't have to say nothing, you couldn't, you could have just kept your mouth shut that somebody called you. Well, the problem of it is, I got a conscience and I couldn't keep my mouth shut on that. So yes, procedure was followed to get this already taken care of. And the thing, the, the best thing is, Mr. Callwood wrote a great article on this thing in the paper. Great article. The bad thing is, it could have been much worse. It could have been the front page if somebody got electrified here at the First Farm Day Festival. But we didn't have that. And that's why I commend our county employees on for putting forth the extra effort of getting this taken care of. And it was a safe event.
Okay, whatever.
Excuse me?
I said whatever, you know, that, that's what, I didn't want anybody to keep their mouth shut. I want them to be making some calls about eight fifteen to Robert and Cheryl and give them a heads up. That's my point. Now, let's just answer the questions and move on.
Last call I made and the advice I gave to our county manager was, they need to go out there tonight. Mr. Oakley, is that correct?
They needed to go.
And that was my opinion. That was not my order, that was my opinion. That's not what happened. Commissioner Walker, I'm sorry, here's your turn.
Thank you, I'm waiting patiently. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have a, a dog in this fight or an ax to ride or, and I'm sort of a, a, sort of neutral. Um, I don't laugh at this, Mr. Chairman, but I really don't see a problem. Let me tell you why. I, I'm not detecting any ill intent on anybody's part. Everybody who I've heard speak, Commissioner Morris, Mr. Lawson, uh, David is not here to represent himself, but, uh, you, our manager, everybody seems to have been acting in good faith. I don't see the politics here. I really don't want to, but I'm, I'm not detecting, uh, I took a sniff of it and I don't smell politics, but maybe I missed something. But anytime that rears its head, it complicates things, no doubt. And I think every person, I'm giving, I'm giving everybody the benefit of the doubt. Everybody seems to be acting in, in good faith and trying to, uh, do what they feel likes best for those involved. Protect the people that be coming to this event. Commissioner Morris wants to protect agrotourism, uh, which I'm a, I'm a supporter of that, very strong supporter. I support our farmers, just put it that way. Our manager was in a sort of a position where he had to make a decision. He made a decision. If someone else had been in his place, would they have made that same decision? I can't say. I have no way to know. But he, he was in a position to make a decision, he made a decision. You were concerned, you were involved, you were trying to do things that you felt like needed to, to be done. Ty was involved, he, he was, uh, giving his opinion. Uh, so I don't see a problem here. I see an opportunity to learn and move on. So not just if someone, not just if the Knights, which as far as I know, they found people, I think a lot of them. They, they're good people to have in our county. And, and, uh, you have others involved, everybody, you, all people, we're all dealing with good people here. And good intentions for the most part, unless somebody can prove otherwise to me, I'm, I'm giving everybody the benefit of the doubt. So what do we need to do? We need to get the information, look at it. If there are some policies and procedures that need to be changed, let's certainly consider that. Try to smooth it up for later. And, and maybe a few things kind of coincidental to this, like folks need to know that there are, is a certain protocol that needs to be followed if they're gonna have a special event. And a phone call to, uh, the right person or people here in the county certainly would be appropriate. What permits do I need? When do I need to get them? How do I need to get them? And, and so next year or in, in future years, if someone is considering doing a special event, hopefully they'll know to, uh, follow the right procedure. But I give Robert and Cheryl the benefit of the doubt also. I'm giving you, Angie, the benefit of the doubt, Mr. Lawson, Rick and others, let's include them. They, they obviously had some decisions to make. Could their decisions have been better? Possibly. Could their timing have been better? Very possibly. But they had an event, and I can just see their minds being focused on making this event work. All these people gonna be on their farm, how do you deal with all this? So I think I hear you say it, I hope I've heard you say it, and I think I hear Commissioner Morris say it. Let's learn from this and move on. You said it, Commissioner Lightford, let's learn from this and move on. And we don't have a problem here. We have an opportunity to smooth things up and make them better for the future. And I'll stop there and, uh, you know, I, I, I sense there are some emotions involved. When, when things get emotional, we maybe lose a little focus. But, uh, right, right now, I'm, I'm happy that we're having this discussion. I see no downside to it and, and, and I think some benefit can come from it. I, I, I would be unhappy to see any person involved attacking another person on a personal basis. We, we don't need that. We need common sense, reasonable heads and, and a willingness to work together to make things better for the future. I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions or comments on this? Just one comment to what Jimmy said there about hoping they get a permit. That's what I want to do policy for so we can make sure. Because when you read these agrotourism statutes, you can very easily draw the conclusion that you don't have to do anything.
Right.
I mean, that they're written to make this easy for farmers to do this and not be burdened. And so assuming that they know every little thing that the local government needs is, I think, something we, we've got to address because
Exactly.
people aren't going around thinking about local government, they're thinking about doing other stuff.
Just like I mentioned, if I may, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Morris, I can see Robert and Cheryl having their mind on the event. Now, yes, there were certain things that they should have done and, you know, to, to dwell on this like saw and sawdust. But if they don't need certain permits and, and that's a valid observation, then that needs to be mentioned in our policy as well.
Exactly.
So I think we have an opportunity here to learn, learn from all this happened and, and move on.
I do agree. And I'll also put it out there for anybody who's wanting to have the events, there is a permit that you can get at our fire marshal's office. Is that correct, Scott? Okay. And, uh, also on your website. All right. So that right there would kind of clear opinion. And I think Commissioner Morris, I believe you're aware of that. I believe he's on the North Carolina Board of Qualifications at one time. Is that correct?
No, he was on the board that oversaw the inspectors, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Is there any more questions or comments on this?
So may I?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so as I understand it, uh, we're going to try to get some answers for, uh, Commissioner Morris's questions and the rest of the board to, to look at. And he, he's, he requested that we would have those by this coming Monday. And maybe we can take a look at the answers to those questions, um, at our next meeting.
We certainly can. Start talking about policy. Mostly, yeah. Policy changes.
And also, uh, to go along with it, I, I, I have no idea what kind of, what do you call it, discretion, uh, violations or whatever are involved. I, when that's available for public view, I'd, I'd like a copy of those.
Of course you'll get to.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll now move on to item C, State's County Health Department, request for hazard pay help. Uh, the health director, Ms. Tammy Morton.
I've enclosed in your packet, um, my request for our employees, the amounts retro to July 1th through the end of the year. We received an AA funding from our state and I okayed it with them if that would be per the agreement. If we could use it for that, they said yes. Our Board of Health approved it. So now I'm here asking you for the final approval for our employees.
Questions, comments?
Tammy, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Morris.
No, you go ahead, Ron. I was just gonna ask, uh, sixty thousand, I think, was that the total?
Uh, sixty-three for that. The total for the AA was seventy thousand, seven sixteen, and the rest will be used to do a negative pressure room that we need. Because when they did our new roof, they sealed the other one off.
And did, does the COVID CARES Act take care of any of that or is that all county money's coming in?
That is AA money and agreement item coming straight to the health department.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morris?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead, Morris.
How's this gonna help the, uh, health department?
This will help our employees' morale, kind of, because right now we are working, they're, they're just fighting to stay up head above water right now. I don't have enough employees, I don't have enough money to hire new nurses, train new nurses. And they don't, they can use comp time, the ones that can get it, nurses are exempt, they don't get comp time. They can't take time off because I only have seven. And they're having to run regular clinic, we're, uh, started our flu vaccines. They're having to test people when they come in. And we did twenty people one day last week on top of seeing regular patients. They called every positive person in the county, and right now that's five hundred and fifty-six people they've called, in addition to every close contact that those five hundred and fifty-six people have been in contact with. Then we handle the, um, mass testing, the ca- uh, state put that on us to be responsible for mass testing events. We handle any questions or guidance the hospital has. Right now we have outbreak at Warner Ridge Assisted Living. We have to handle all that for them, getting them what they need. And they, right now, they're, it's bad every day. I know they hate coming to work, but it's been a seven month pandemic, but the phone rings continuously. You cannot get off contact tracing before you get another phone call. And we're dealing, the schools, they have been great to work with. We have a spreadsheet, our nurse, and you can talk to Candace and get a nurse perspective. They will get texts at eleven o'clock at night. So right now we don't stop, it's twenty-four seven.
So, so, so what you're thinking is, because you don't have the personnel you need, you got to extend?
To make them happy to stay.
Good. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Walker, Morris, when y'all get first.
You go. Okay. Um, Terry, help me here, please. Does this money come in from state or federal funds totally?
It came from the state. It came from the CARES Act, but that portion was gave to DHHS and they allocated to every health department. And that's attached how much every county received from that agreement.
So, so, um, no county funds?
No, this is not county funds at all.
Right. Makes it pretty easy to, for me to say yes to.
The way it works is the county pays it out. It, we send it to the state saying what we did with it, like to Susan Little, and it comes back into aid to county and it goes right back to Julia and she gets it right back. So it's no county funds at all.
Thank you. I like the sound of that.
Hey, Tammy. Uh, is, so this is, is this money, this is seventy thousand, seven sixteen, is that the amount?
Right, the total.
And so that, that came in from the state to be used for only this kind of purpose or for other things as well?
There's other purposes, but we have another AA right now that's over a hundred thousand dollars that we have to spend too.
Okay, oh, this has to be spent by when?
This one has to be spent by December thirtieth.
So our other.
The other one goes till July.
So you guys and other health departments have decided that this is the best way to spend it, do you think?
We have, um, the App District, we have a call every week with our region. They are doing, they're evidently, their nurses have comp time. They're paying them out their comp time. And for site, it's paying overtime. But when you get into paying a nurse overtime, that's way more than this will ever be.
Yeah. And it's, this is called hazard pay, is that because of exposure to the disease or is it just because you're working extra hours?
Yeah, you can't call it a bonus, but in their AA, you can call it hazard pay or overtime.
Oh, okay, so they specified in order for it to be legally spent.
Right.
Okay. Uh, is, does any of our other departments like EMS or anybody, have they been offered any money like this?
I don't know if they get AAs like we do, because we'll get it from maternal health. We get them all through the year for different programs and we just have to do certain guidelines from the state to receive that money. We'll get it for immunes, vaccines, and we buy them with that and everything else. We have extra funding this year for flu vaccines because of COVID.
I'm fine with this, doing this, I mean, they're working, I'm, I'm sure they're working just as hard as you say they are, so. Given this mess we're in with this virus, so.
Yeah.
No, I have no questions on this. I'd read on this earlier, but, uh, Commissioner Morris kind of touched on it also, and our sheriff's partner EMS has also been doing the same thing you guys have. And we thank you for your hard work on it, but, uh, yeah, as far as this part, I have no problem with it. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do you want to move this tonight or do you want to? Cause there's a budget amendment here that doesn't have a number, but Julia can give you a number for it if you want to act on it tonight or if you want to move it to the next meeting?
Personally, I, before, uh, Commissioner Walker says, his statement about moving things to action, we're talking about people that have been working through some extreme situations. And I feel like that, it would be a morale booster if we went ahead and moved it to action tonight. Personally, that's, that's my opinion.
I agree.
Thank you.
I don't commit. Sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Twenty, twenty-eight, budget amendment twenty-eight, okay.
All right, we now move on to item D, the portable ventilators, Mr. Oakley.
Did we make a decision to move that to action?
Yes.
I've got a budget amendment number two.
Thank you.
Okay. With this, uh, portable ventilators, uh, this was something that, uh, Brandon Gentry would love to have on his vehi- on his amelances. You have a letter of support from the, uh, medical, medical examiner, Dr. Nelson, and how he is in support of it. You also see the cost proposal of, uh, forty but take to, uh, to these ventilators in our, in our, uh, uh, first responders in our big, big amelances. big ambulances. No budget amendment is needed due to this is a company that is?
No, we, there's a sole source resolution.
Sole source resolution, yeah.
Yeah, because they only manufacture it. There's no budget amendment, because we can take this money directly from the CARES Act's funds for the COVID-related.
That's correct. It's a ninety-eight thousand, twenty-four dollars and seventy cents cost. You've got your resolution that needs to be taken care of. The resolution is referring to the General Statute one forty-three, one twenty-nine, with the exceptions of the performance and price competition is or any product is not available, or the need of the product is available only from one source of an individual, and in that case, that's what's happened here. So I am requesting that the board move forward with the, some of the COVID CARES Act money, purchase these ventilators for our big life support units.
Questions, comments?
Any comments? I've got, I'm getting all these texts that the video ain't working tonight.
I know. We were working on it from about four o'clock today. David, I thought they had it back live streaming, and then it's not. But David did ensure that it's recording, so we'll get it up in the morning. I've been getting them too, constant.
Questions, comments on this?
I'm not ignoring the meeting. I'm just.
I know.
I have a question.
Mr. Walker, go ahead, please.
What is, what justifies the need for, I know we have a letter of support from our Medical Director, but what actually justifies the need for these units?
The portable ventilators?
Yes.
They're needed on the ambulances. Dr. Nelson was going to request them in this upcoming year's budget. Because they're portable ventilators, they can be purchased from the COVID money. Now is a great time to get them while you have that available.
So instead of waiting for next year's budget, which would probably require county funds, we can go ahead and do it now and use the?
Yes. They need, they need those on the ambulances anyway, but especially during this time, it's, it's very justifiable to use the money for those portable ventilators.
Antique, something.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments?
No, I'm definitely good with it.
Really upgrading our, what they have, devices they have to work to assist the citizens in their time of need.
Well, if you ever have to send one for me, I hope it's got plenty of good equipment.
You want the best. That's for sure.
Oh, I thought you did specific. Okay. So do you need to, can you just give her?
She's checking.
Okay. That's, I was thinking you did the specific one in case it got approved to?
That needs to be approved.
We need to know if it needs to go with, I'm not sure. Because Julia, this one with no number, but she's attached twenty-eight to. Yeah, I'm not sure what she's got. So on the, on the ventilators, we, we can move that to action for next time, or, or this time, if you're willing to do that, we can get them ordered. We're just trying to make sure we get everything ordered and get the purchase orders in for it before the December thirty-first cutoff.
I say go ahead and move it tonight. So we got to spend that money by December thirty-first anyway. Now go ahead and start getting things in order on it.
That's correct.
And it's not, it's not county funds, so.
How's the rest of the board feel?
I'm sorry. As usual, feel mixed, because we have this sort of policy requirement that it needs to be urgent. And sometimes I'm wondering how purchase is defined in circumstances like this.
I understand. That's what I'm saying.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bolt. I'm not gonna say I won't go along with it. But my preference is we have a protocol or procedure in place, and it's ongoing. I've been this way for years. The rest of the men and all can attest to that. And I'd just like to see things done sort of by the book.
Okay.
But I'm not gonna cause problems if you want to go ahead and do this. I can go along with it.
Okay. Mr. Langford, you fine with moving it to action or not?
Okay.
Commissioner Morris?
I don't, I don't want to wait till next meeting.
We'll move this to action or not? We'll go ahead and move on to Item B.
Pause for just a second.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Do you mean to just do this the next time to cover this one?
Yeah.
And are you going to add a budget amendment number for?
I don't know. I don't have the budget. I don't know what.
On the agenda right here for her, for this, for the seventy thousand?
I don't have a budget amendment, know what accounts it's going into.
Okay.
Haley will have it for next meeting. Will that be okay?
Well, I mean, it's, they were trying to approve it tonight, but since they didn't, because I was thinking you had this budget amendment ready for that.
I thought, I thought it was, I thought this budget amendment was for this. It wasn't. Okay.
Is there a budget amendment?
So it looks like the Health, yeah, they're not ready to move that.
What place they have on the action agenda for the next meeting then?
Yeah, so, so we had that as Item B for action, so we're gonna now put that to the next meeting for the Health Department, and the budget amendment for those, those bonuses, since they didn't have that ready for that. So the portable ventilators would now be Item B on action.
So the Health Department request is going to be placed on action at the next meeting?
Yes, yes. Julia, Julia was thinking that this budget amendment was going to cover that, but it did not, so.
So that's, that's out for tonight. However, we can still move, we can still move the portable ventilator station for now. Is that correct?
Yeah, if that's okay with the board.
I'm good with it.
Portable ventilators, what, what are we talking about?
The, what we were just talking about, the portable ventilators that Brandon Gentry with EMS and Daryl Nelson are requesting, they're going to request them in this year's budget, but because they're a COVID-related expense, we can purchase them with the CARES Act money, so it's no county funds. It's almost a hundred thousand dollars. We can go ahead and purchase them for all the ambulances out of that CARES Act money.
How many we're talking about?
Six.
Six? One for each ambulance?
Yes.
Okay.
One last point on that. Wayne back in the back here knows about ventilators. If somebody would like to, any additional information from him?
One thing I'd like to say about those is, if you haven't been around any of this COVID stuff here lately, well, we put a team in, somebody, we're constantly right over top of their head ventilating them, even though we got a mask, we try to shield them. But these portable ventilators, that takes all that out of the equation. Once we hook that up, the medic's done. This machine does it all by itself. It's more efficient than we are. It's a constant breath. And to me, these things right here, they are dead given for these medics out here. So no, we've had two minutes in the county. It's already been attested by the COVID, and this will help prevent that even further, because the respiratory part of a patient is the worst dangerous part you can mess with. And these things right here will prevent that bit of that right there. So that's one count, give some kind of insight on them.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's going to be moved to action. We'll now move on to Item E, the demolition of the county-owned property, Mr. Oakley.
Mr. Chairman, this is something y'all have been talking about in taking care of the old prison camp here in Metta's. It's the demolishing of and disposing of fifteen structures located on Dotch Town Road at the old prison camp. That's the option one. And option two is the, the removal of a single-family dwelling that you purchased from the Bullins Estate. We have the proposals that's coming in. We opened them up, we looked at them, and here's how they, they line up. So I am recommending that if you want to move forward with this, this cleanup, that we go with the number-one proposal of one hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars, which is DH ribbon, I believe, right?
I'm not sure which one. We can't say which ones they are.
Okay.
Because they're, the way they bid on those, we can't really say who is, who is who until it's awarded.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think that's a bidder in there, but I don't know which one is which. We're required to go with the lowest one on this scenario.
Right. Questions or comments on this?
I have some.
Commissioner Morris?
My personal position on this is that, that I don't exactly understand the urgency of doing it now, and I would like to at least wait till we have our budget review, I think, in November, because we're in a budget year where we have lots of uncertainty with the COVID thing and everything. Secondly, I know one of those buildings over there, if I'm not mistaken, is being used and has, had improvements done on it for cable storage, fiber optic cables, all that kind of stuff. Is that one?
I'm not sure about improvements. I've heard it's being used for storage, because Mark was waiting to give them a notice of if they're going to be torn down, so they would have ample time to get those items out of there. I've not heard anything about improvements.
Okay. Well, I'm not so sure I would, when it's, I think we have a long-term agreement for them, with them to use that building, and I think they've spent thou, several thousand dollars from what I've heard, putting down gravel and doing other improvements. So I would like to at least get Mark to give us some, if there's going to be any accommodation for them or whatever.
I do know they put fence in them.
Yeah, and they did fencing as well. I think the fencing backs up against the animal shelter, which gives them a fence. So, you know, the other buildings, I'd like to see them all gone, if we can afford to do it. That's not, not an issue. But that one, I would have a question on, while we tear it down, if it needs to be used, continue to be used. So I think that's all I have really for it. Oh, I don't understand why we can't see the names of the bidders. Maybe y'all just explain that to me later.
Yeah, well, I was kind of confused about that, too, because usually when we open them, they're here in the room and you do it. But somehow about how this bid process was, Glenda was explaining, and she verified it with the school of government, that the way these were received, they're not public record until that project's awarded, because it's a proposal rather than, but we've done RFPs before, that we put them out. There's something to do with the money, too, because I said, were we wrong on the salary study to divert the information, you know, on those? And she said, no, it was under the threshold of money. So I'm, that's a good Glenda question for Tom.
Could you shed any light on that? I'm just curious. I've never seen that before, where proposals came in and then you couldn't. But it, but there may be some very good reason for it, so.
Yeah, it's something, it's something to do with this, this demo stuff and the amount of money, because we were surprised to find that out, too.
I'd be real curious to see who they are, if we can. But not, then whatever.
If you elected to move with this, board members, there is the budget amendment that is attached to it that you can see also. Also, I want to let you know, we're having a lot of problem with people pilling around, if that's a good way of saying it. You can ask the sheriff. I believe I've been notified that there's been two break-ins in the last couple of several weeks.
There's three.
Three break-ins? Now, what they're after is beyond me, but we do have people messing around over there, and the last thing we want to do is someone trying to see what they can steal and get hurt. But, but anyway, Mike has informed me of a, of a break-in, and then Scott informed me of another break-in here in the last week, or was it, was it you or someone else? Could have been, could have been someone else. But as you can see right here, the sheriff has just said you've had three in the last month, probably. It's something that we need to, I, I would, I would recommend you go ahead and clean it up.
More questions, comments on this? Mr. Walker?
We want to take a look at excluding the building that's being used, I guess by River Street, for storage, and see how much difference, if any, that makes. The other thing is, it's not just break-ins. There's some illicit activity apparently going on there, maybe drug-related. And it's not fair to that neighborhood to have a situation like that discontinuance exist. They deserve to have some remedy, some positive resolution. So I'm on board with cleaning it up.
Let's not forget the rats. Mr. Oakley seemed the size of a groundhog, and bees the size of my thumb, so, yeah. I mean, him both took off running.
I'm over there anymore, I'm going to be more careful in the future.
I would. I tell you this, we heard a roar, and we didn't want a truck coming down the road. It was a nest of bees, so we hauled tail out of there. I can tell you that.
I remember you running from some bees.
Yes.
But one more question. Do we have things stored there that would need to be moved prior to the cleanup? So that's very doable?
Yeah, the, the old garage down here is ready for storage. Public Works has made that a really nice storage facility, and put shelves up, so there's places to put everything.
I'm on board.
I'm on.
So before the next meeting, if you, whatever you do with this, I will find out from Mark about that other building, and if there's a contract with them, if improvements have been made to it, if there's a way to leave that one, if need be, we'll get those answers to those questions. I was told about the building, but I was never told there was improvements. Mark was just saying he was going to give them notice that they would be possibly tearing that down.
There wasn't a lot of improvements done to it.
To that building?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I do have a question, though. There's eleven proposals on the RFPs. When will we have access instead of, as, as been mentioned, let's say, proposal three, when will we know what company that is? When will that be accessible to the commissioners?
So what, what she's got on here, if you, on this demo RFP memorandum at the bottom says, "Due to submittals are in RFP format, contractors' names are not public record until project is awarded." And with these kind of, with these bids, she said that it's in there that you go with the lowest bidder anyway on those. So she could explain that better than me, so she could probably come to the next meeting and explain that to you. But that's, that's how she told it to me. And I did look at it in her contracting book that she showed me exactly where it said that about the RFPs and about the not being public record, because it made me nervous. I thought, gosh, have we done this wrong on all kinds of things? But it's something to do with that kind of project, so I'm not sure. But I do, you know, that is that lowest bidder, and so those names, I guess the other ones wouldn't be public record if they're not awarded the contract, is the way I'm reading it.
And we will have our get with you time, so you could see exactly what's going on with this in one.
Action next meeting?
Yes, sir.
And we can get everything together for that.
All right. We'll go ahead and move on to Item F, the noise ordinance discussion. Mr. Oakley?
This right here, Mr. Chairman, and pull it up. This is an ordinance that come before you guys on the twenty-eighth, and Mr. Walker had requested that we look into the current noise ordinance at the next meeting. And what you have here on your agenda, you'll see that we have attached a, the current ordinance that we have, and then we have two other ordinances that you guys talked about back in two thousand and ten during the month of August. So with that, you know, I'm just going to leave this with Mr. Walker, and y'all can move forward with, you want an update, revamp, or whatever the noise ordinance you got, that's, here it is, and we can move from this.
Commissioner Manon?
Thank you. I noticed that Commissioner Walker was chairman during this noise ordinance in two thousand and ten. This can be, in my opinion, a noise ordinance can be a very complex issue. Complexity at the top of the scale. And we, and I noticed that some of the comments and feedback he got, that Commissioner Walker and the board received at that time was from the law enforcement agencies, or sheriff, et cetera. We have Sheriff Marshall with us. I'd like to hear comments from him, sir.
Okay. Commissioner, oh, okay. Sheriff Mike Marshall, would you come forward, please?
Back, back in two thousand and ten, this, this ordinance was addressed, because the ordinance is in place, was a nineteen ninety-four ordinance. And?
Is that Mike on mine? Is that Mike on? Okay.
Probably. Is that better?
Yeah.
This was done back nineteen ninety-four, the ordinance that we use now. But back two thousand and ten, it was addressed, and I spent about four months working with the county employees on, looking at what the business impact would be on a new noise ordinance. We worked on it for several months, come up with a solution that, where we talked with several of the business owners that would work with them, and we presented it, and that was the last I heard on it. That was in two thousand and ten. That, I've got a copy of that ordinance that was drew up at the time and was approved off of by the county attorney at the current time. If this ordinance is going to be reviewed again, what I would suggest is if we go to the two thousand and ten ordinance that was looked at, with it being ten years old, we probably need to? at, with it being ten years old, we probably need to, uh, get permission to work with economic development to, uh, review what business impacts it'll have if we create a new ordinance and using this as a guideline, what we, what we done in two thousand and ten, what we need to modify to make it work, I agree that there needs to be some modification on the nineteen ninety-four noise ordinance, but however, um, we gotta be business friendly when we do it, to see where we send that there.
Questions, comments?
So, I got, Mr. Walker? Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate the work that you've put into it, and I apologize to Mr. Menon for not doing a better job as chairman back in two thousand and ten, we should, we should have this wrapped up, should have completed it then, right, Sheriff?
I put around many hours in on that.
I know, my apologies to you as well, you were here, weren't you?
Yeah.
Um, I totally agree with you, we, we don't want to pour the ox of our businesses, we, we continue to strive to be a business-friendly county, so we certainly have to consider that, let me, let me go back, Sheriff, and tell you the specific, and you're probably aware of it, that kind of caught my curiosity, I was misting someone in our community, the area I live in, and heard loud shooting going on and on and on and on, and I asked the, uh, homeowner there, I said, what, what's, what is it, and they said, oh, this happens all the time, happens every weekend, I said, how long does it last, and they said, hours and hours, I said, well, you can't even enjoy being outside, I couldn't, uh, it's very disturbing, then I got, started getting contacted about it, and, and, uh, someone who lived even nearer where it was actually happening, and these are not small guns, uh, in my opinion, they sounded loud and pretty near, and, and I thought, you know, it's not right for one person's hobby or passion or whatever to disturb the peace and calm of a whole neighborhood, and do it for extended lengths of time, surely there's something in place to deal with situations like this, and I read these, uh, ordinance, these ordinances, and it says loud and, um, unnecessary, well, two thousand and ten version, it, it's not lawful for any person to make continued calls to be made or continued to create norly assist in creating any unreasonable loud excessive and unnecessary noise or sound at any time in the county, taking into consideration the volume, duration, frequency, time, and other characteristics of the sound. Well, shooting thousands of rounds of ammunition per month, I guess that's disturbance, and, and I know Second Amendment rights come into play, but Second Amendment gives the right to own the bare arms, not disturb your neighbors by shooting excessively, and then I get something like this email that says, uh, officers came by months ago, and it was declared that we are shooting safely, and there is, there is no noise ordinances because we're not in city limits, so, so the person actually doing the shooting thinks there is no noise, uh, ordinance, said he was told that by deputies, I guess, because it's in the county, and thought there was no noise ordinance because they were not in the city limits.
The nineteen ninety-four ordinance is vague, there's really not a lot of enforcement to it, um, it, it mainly applies towards, uh, radios, music, and it also puts time frame on it.
Right.
The two thousand and ten version changed a lot of that, the work can be enforced anytime during the day, depending on if it's a continuous noise violation, the worst is serving somebody's peace and rest, and, uh, it was not adopted in two thousand and ten, so we're still operating on the nineteen ninety-four version.
Like I say, my apologies, we're not trying to get that adopted at that time.
But, uh, the work put in on that in two thousand and ten was to try to, um, try to be business-friendly, because we've got several venues that are outside, outdoor venues, and you, at the time, you had, uh, two racetracks, also you got multiple businesses that do industrial-type work, such as Brook Cave, you got some plants down in Pine Hall, and also you had, uh, lumber company, Hank's lumber company, so we had to work around those to make sure we weren't, uh, interfering with the business, but I think with a little modification, we can make this work out, but I, I really need to work with the economic developer if, if y'all, if y'all request it to, uh, make sure we ain't interfering with none of the business.
My purpose, Mr. Chairman and Sheriff, if I may, my purpose for bringing this up at this time was to give you another tool to work with, to give you another air in your quiver to deal with situations that, uh, are maybe occurring in our county, I don't think anyone would like for someone to come next door to them and start creating noise for hour after hour after hour, either shooting or loudspeaker or whatever, and, and it sounds like unless we do something like we're looking at here, the two thousand and ten version, you don't really have anything, I'm not sure you have enough to work with.
Rick, Rick is county manager at the time, he and, uh, along with the county attorney, ended up, and they negotiate some similar, I guess it was seven, eight years ago, the word, ordinance didn't cover it, however, we were able to negotiate through that to make arrangements, but it was, um, it was a tight venue that we had to work with.
Right, well, I don't, I don't feel comfortable you being in that kind of position, I'd rather for you to have something clear, something black and white, that's fair and consistent...